I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sharon McDonald.
Sorry.
I said here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Rudin.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with our invocation given by Pastor Shelby Moon of Westminster Presbyterian Church, led, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Guthrie. Thank you so much for being here. It's very good to see you. Thank you.
My pleasure. Let us pray. Almighty God, who ordained the state after the fall and who gave your Son his head over all things to your church, grant, we pray, your wisdom and guidance to these, the city commissioners, not only for the blessing of our churches and our community and all of our families, but for the good of all men. We pray that you would give them wisdom, insight. We pray that you would bless them. We pray that you would bless our community. We look to you humbly and acknowledge that while all of us fall short of your holy law, we pray that the principles and the decisions made here would be in accord with the principles of your law. And we pray that through their decisions, our community would be blessed. We pray that not only in their deliberations, but in the fruit of all their endeavors, that they themselves, as well as all those in our community, would be characterized by love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control to the glory of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And if you believe in prayer, I would ask that you would pray for him. He's going through some stuff and he needs our prayers, so. Anyway, alrighty. We're going to move on. It's very bright in here. Apparently, they've changed the bulbs. Okay. Alright, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to presentations. Almagordo Main Street Support of the Rad Retrocade. That is a lot to say. Nolan Ojeda is here from, he's the executive director of Almagordo Main Street.
Alrighty. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Payne, Commissioners, city staff. Thank God we all got through the winds to get here. So. My name is Nolan Ojeda. I am the executive director for Almagordo Main Street. And I'm here tonight, joined by local business owners and community members, to speak in support of Rad Retrocade's LITA application. I'll be honest with you. I normally hate reading from a script, but there's a lot to cover and not a ton of time. And I'm a little suspect of the fact that I accidentally sent the wrong presentation to the city first, and that might be what's there, but it'll be okay. So listen to my words. Maybe don't pay attention to the slides. Alright. So I'm going to read, and I apologize ahead of time that I'm not going to be great at making eye contact while I do so, so please forgive me. We have worked closely with Rad Retrocade's owner, Alex Macias, for over eighteen months, and we truly believe this project is the next big step forward for downtown. So what is Rad Retrocade? Rad Retrocade is an eighties, nineties themed, think Fresh Prince of Bel-Air, Back to the Future, right, think that kind of era, time period, arcade, restaurant, bar, and entertainment and event space. His locations currently in El Paso and Las Cruces have been incredibly successful. I will skip representing the data because he will cover it later under new business for you guys, but it is an experience above all else. I'm here because this community sees Rad not just as another business, but as a major investment in our young people, in our small businesses' ability to grow, and making Almagordo a more vibrant, vibrant place to live, work, and visit. Our goal tonight is very simple, to show you that Almagordo is ready, excited, and fully behind approving this business to come into our district. Rad brings with it, I'm just gonna, we're gonna test real quick, okay, y'all? We're gonna see. Oh, yeah, no, that's the wrong one. Okay. So Rad brings with its jobs, at least twenty to forty positions based on their other locations. Many of these positions are part-time, which is not a bad thing. It's actually incredibly vital for our high school students and our college students to have that type of employment opportunity. It fills a current gap in our business offerings downtown, one specifically geared towards nightlife. It gives families something to do together downtown. And specifically, it gives teens a place to hang out within walking distance of the high school, and it gives adults a reason to stay downtown after hours. Currently, and you'll see a lot of them in the audience here, the small business owners I have come to know and love from our downtown district, a lot of them explained to me that they don't remain open for longer hours because there simply isn't a draw for foot traffic that makes it worth the cost of serving those people. Many business owners have expressed to me that having Rad downtown would be beneficial because it would act as an anchor for attracting after-hours visitors for entertainment and dining, and it would actually give them a reason to stay open later. Rad is new to us because it has a hybrid concept, and we don't have that yet. One that adapts across ages and times of day while anchoring other businesses nearby. Now, what do I mean by that? Rad acts as an all-ages venue until about seven or eight PM, and then it becomes twenty-one and over. And it can act as an incredibly important draw to specifically our young airmen to come downtown, spend their time, and spend their money. Finally, and I can't emphasize this enough, I know from my many talks with you folks that it is our joint goal to revitalize our downtown area. And unfortunately, the reality we face is that many of these buildings have been left to deteriorate for years, if not decades, on end. And to bring these buildings up to code is going to cost a lot of money. So what we're really considering here, really, is setting a precedence for either we need to incentivize and help offset the initial cost of purchasing, renovating a building, to then open a successful business. Because let's be honest, many of you are business owners. Could you really stare down the barrel of dumping two to three million dollars into a business, into a building before you even added your equipment, your kitchen, your staff? How long would it take for you to get a return on that investment? So what we're weighing here is, do we incentivize a way for these folks to come in and save our buildings and open successful businesses that help all of us? Or are we weighing how much it's going to cost in fees, trouble, effort, staff time, when we absolutely end up having to condemn these buildings and tear them down? In Las Cruces, which is where I pull most of my data because honestly, it's just a little bit more relatable than El Paso would be, right? East or west side? There are two locations for Rad, east and west side El Paso and one in Las Cruces. So what I'm about to talk about now is all based out of Las Cruces. It actually helped them to transform their downtown after five PM. It increased foot traffic, supported other restaurants, and gave people reason to stay longer. The Las Cruces Main Street had, and the city, had installed pedestrian sensors to track how activity ebbs and flows in the district. And after the addition of Rad Retrocade, the data shows that there was a substantial increase in evening foot traffic. There's this thing called a hungry market phenomenon in economic development. And the idea really comes from studies that have shown specifically in rural America that there is a lack of options for the citizens, and they are hungry for entertainment and quality-of-life opportunities. Once he gets up here and he presents his data, you'll notice, Mr. Macias, you'll notice that the west and east side El Paso locations do not generate nearly as much income and revenue as their Las Cruces location does. This is due to that hungry market phenomenon. There simply aren't as many options, so people go there. Almagordo is very much a hungry market. And regarding specifically around things like children's birthday parties, date nights, girls' nights, et cetera. And that's why we believe that we will see the massive difference in revenue like they've seen in Las Cruces compared to their west and east side locations in El Paso. Now, some stats that are important to most consumers. The Las Cruces location for Rad reports that a majority of its customers range anywhere from fifteen years of age to forty-five years, and the average customer spends twenty to thirty dollars a visit. This information shows us that this business is likely to attract a wide range of demographics while remaining incredibly affordable to our community. The concept also supports local musicians, artists, and community events as they host things such as cosplay nights, trivia, karaoke, DJs, and of course, family events. In short, when Rad moved into Las Cruces, it became a hub, and that's what we predict happening here. Almagordo is ready. We are literally already spending about four point seven million dollars in state and municipal public infrastructure investment in our downtown, with our new sidewalks, lighting, public art, greenery, and accessible routes. We are paving the way. This LITA grant would help us to increase and ultimately leverage the impact of the public investment that's already taking place. Additionally, it addresses a large building vacancy and blight in our district. The building is about nine thousand square feet. The building has been left to deteriorate for years. And based on initial estimates, it would cost about two million dollars just to bring it up to code alone. That does not include equipment, such as gaming equipment, kitchen equipment, freezers, et cetera. The other thing they found is that it supports not just one business, but the larger ecosystem that we are actively trying to build. And we can tell we're trying to build it because we just put four point seven million dollars into the district. And the most important part is that it keeps our young people and our dollars in our town instead of traveling to El Paso or Las Cruces for these type of opportunities. Now, I don't want you to just take it from me, because I'm boring and my slideshow's wrong, but we've brought a few voices that here, here that can represent different parts of our community. So first off, I'm going to introduce to you two different business owners that are downtown. These would be Rad Retrocade's neighbors. Unfortunately, I had a community member that had to pull out. I will read her statement, and then I actually have a young person that's going to come up here and speak to you. So first off, I would like to introduce Tricia Roberts with Farmers, and she is currently, her business is currently located at nine hundred New York Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. For those who don't know me, I am Tricia Roberts. Can you hear me okay? I can't hear myself, so. Okay. I'm Tricia Roberts. I own a Farmers Insurance Agency, and my fiancee also owns a local automotive parts store here in town. I moved down to New York Avenue in December, so right after construction started. When we went to move in, there was actually, New York Avenue was closed, Ninth Street was closed, and then we went to move in, and the alley was closed. And we were like, how are we going to move in? It has been, it hasn't been easy. We've had customers leave us to another agents, other agencies that are more accessible. We've had people falling in our back door. But I say all that because I truly think the risk is going to be worth the reward. I think that when it's complete, we're going to have one of the best business locations in town. And I truly believe that the construction on Main Street is going to make New York Avenue the heart of Almagordo. Now, I don't think construction is going to do that alone. We have to get more businesses down there. We have to have a variety of businesses down there. We can't have just retail and art. We have to have service. We have to have entertainment, nightlife, food, drinks. You know, we have to have a mix so that we get all different people down there. We want our retired community, which a lot of Almagordo is, but we want our kids, our families, and we want our airmen. We got to get our airmen out of the dorms. I hear so often that they want to play video games, and it's just a different generation, and they don't want to come to town. So with this and with other things that are happening, I think it's going to bring them out of the dorms, and it's going to bring them to our community. And that's what, one, our community needs, and that's what they need. We need them to get into town and out of the dorms and to love Almagordo as much as we do. So I think it would be the perfect addition to downtown as a business owner. And then, more than a business owner, I'm also a mom. I have an eight-year-old daughter and I have a three-year-old son. And it was a big decision for us to want to raise our kids in Almagordo. We were both born and raised here, but you know, we've considered moving to different places, doing different business in different places, but truly, we love it here. We love it here so much that we volunteer time. We, I serve on different boards. I started a nonprofit that is focused around community events for kids and families and putting money back into the community. And so our focus is to make this town a better place to live and to raise our kids. And the other day, we went for a family day. We went to the zoo. We went to the library, and then we went to Alamo Jump, and that was about it. We really had nowhere to take our kids. That was fun for them for dinner, other than five seven five, which kids love five seven five. But we needed somewhere fun to take our kids, and that would have been the perfect addition, is to go right next door to an arcade with dinner. And you think about it, and a lot of the places to eat here in town, there's nowhere to just let our kids run around, and that's what they want to do, their kids. We want to enjoy food and a drink and then let them have fun too, so that would be the perfect addition for our kids. And then, not only my kids' ages, but my nieces and nephews are all teens, and I want them to go somewhere and stay out of trouble. You know, if they don't have anything to do, what, what are they going to do? They're going to get in trouble. So we need that for our teens, and again, our airmen, to come and have a place to stay out of trouble and where, where better than centrally located on New York Avenue to have all those things. I recently went to a small town called Salina, Ohio. It has population seven thousand, look it up someday, seven thousand people there, and they have the best downtown district I have ever been to. And it's, there's at least five different bars and restaurants down there, maybe even more. And they're all very modern, but old, and you could tell there's been money put into them, and they've really, they've thrived down there. Even in such a small town, having them all together in one place like that, because you can walk back and forth between them. And that was the highlight of our trip, was walking around their downtown and getting to see that. So I think that we can have that here in Almagordo, and I think it would really benefit us. So as a community member, community leader, a mom and business owner, I would like to ask that you guys vote yes for the LITA funds for Rad Retrocade. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. So the next one up is, we have Rachel Anderson. She is the current owner of Infinity Suites Big House. And she is, her business is located at nine oh eight New York Avenue. Might sound familiar. She was one of our participants in our Small Business Accelerator, and we are so glad she's willing to speak to you guys, so I'll bring her up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, everybody. That's taken time out of your evening.
It's very rare that someone shorter than me. So there you go.
As he said, my name is Rachel Anderson. This is my husband, Ryan. We own Infinity Suites off of New York Avenue in the Main Street District. I want to thank you for allowing us time to share our thoughts and statement this evening. I stand before you to share in the excitement of a vision, the potential to transform our community, a vision embodied by Rad Retrocade. In a community where nightlife and entertainment options for kids, families, and adults are glaringly scarce, Rad emerges as not just a business, but a vibrant community hub that will breathe new life into our social landscape. We understand that our community currently lacks spaces for social interaction and leisure activities for people of all ages. As parents of four children from eighteen to two years old, Rad seeks to fill that void, offering a family-friendly environment. This means parents can bring their children to relish in retro charm, enjoy interactive games, and create special memories together. It not only is about entertainment, but it's about building connections and fostering relationships within families. Rad would be more than just a local establishment. It has the potential to attract tourism from neighboring towns and bringing in visitors who seek, who are seeking an entertaining night out. This not only boosts our local economy, but also showcases the charm and personality of our community. As small business owners in the Main Street District, we are so excited to see the time, energy, and resources that have been poured into our district. A business such as Rad would be an amazing addition to a brand-new revitalized downtown. Excuse me. Together, we can create a bustling environment that draws people in, sparking interest and engagement all throughout the day from sunup to sundown. But perhaps more importantly, Rad would facilitate events that foster community spirit. Picture-themed nights, tournaments, community gatherings, these initiatives will not only enliven our social scene, but also create shared experiences that foster unity and pride in our town. By coming together in this lively space, residents will find a sense of belonging that has been sorely missed. In conclusion, Rad isn't just about providing food and fun. It's about reigniting our community engagement. By bringing this vision to life, we can transform our town from a place that feels quiet and disconnected into a vibrant community, buzzing with life, laughter, and shared memories. Together, let's make Rad a reality and watch our community thrive. Please vote yes on the LITA funds for them. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Rachel and Ryan. Okay. So unfortunately, I had another speaker lined up, and her name is Samantha Romero, but she couldn't make it, maybe because of the wind. I don't know. So on her behalf, I'm going to read her statement. She did manage to send that over to me today. Reads as follows. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Payne and Commissioners. I am here today to advocate for the approval of Rad Retrocade here in Almagordo. Small businesses are the backbone of our community, driving economic growth and creating local jobs. Rad Retrocade promises to fill a gap in our local market, offering local entertainment and nightlife, which is currently underserved. Beyond just commerce, Rad Retrocade intends to actively participate in community events and support local initiatives, fostering a stronger sense of community. Approving this business is not just about adding another storefront. It's about investing in the future of Almagordo, ensuring we remain a vibrant and attractive place to work and live. I urge you to consider the positive impact this business will have on our town. It's an opportunity to support local entrepreneurship, enhance our community- It's an opportunity to support local entrepreneurship, enhance our community, and boost our local economy. Thank you for your time and consideration. Samantha Romero, who is a banker at Wells Fargo downtown. And then finally, last but definitely not least, we keep talking about the young people. Let's hear let's let you guys hear from one yourselves. So I'm going to bring up Cruz Hernandez, and he is going to read and/or ad lib, I don't know what his choice is, his statement.
Greetings, Mayor Payne and the Commission. I am here to also advocate for Rad Retrocade. I think I speak for most of the community when in this complaint, and that there's nothing to do after hours, especially now more than ever with downtown being shut down. And I know that costs money. And with Rad Retrocade, it will not only bring money to itself or give money from itself to the city, but it also boosts the income from the surrounding areas, from not only more people going there to like work out to hang out or whatever, but it'll also with longer hours, longer hours means more people are going to be needed to have, which creates more jobs for people. Along with that, it also might help in the school-wise because as if Rad does well and gets successful, it also means that the students have more opportunities to get scholarships or fund, I can't think of the right word, but funders for like school events and all and all that. And speaking from my personal life, my little brother, Joseph, he he's an old head, and he's eight years old, and he loves the retro stuff. And we go we want to go to Arcade Dungeon, but that's open Friday, Saturday, whenever. It's only open for limited days on limited hours. But with Rad Retrocade, not only will it be open for all throughout the week, but it'll open be open longer with more opportunities and more chances to spend money. Um, God, sorry, I'm blinking. Following that, I lost my thought. Sorry about that. Oh, following that, it will also, I don't it did like everyone else said who are much more better at talking about this topic, it'll boost traffic with among people, especially the high schoolers, because downtown is close to the high school. And I know a bunch of people who have nothing to do, who can wait for buses or events or whatever to happen and just go pop down at Rad Retrocade and spend 20 to 30 bucks. Also, all the money that would be brought could be thrown into other projects that we the city are trying to make happen. And that's all I got. So thank you for your time, Commissioner and Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your mama call you, Cruzito? All right. So finally, I'll just wrap this up for you guys. Thank you for hearing all of us tonight. Rad Retrocade has proven it can bring life to a downtown with our neighbor neighbors, and we're confident that it can do the same here. It is actually a compliment that Rad Retrocade wants to move here and sees the potential for success. Alex Macias, the owner, and his wife, the other owner, probably the boss, were so passionate about bringing their business to Alamo Gordo because they believed our community deserved the same opportunities and the same service that El Paso and Las Cruces currently have. From every conversation I've had with them, and there have been many, let me just tell you, when you get Mr. Macias on the phone, it's an hour and a half long phone call. So many long phone calls. I have come to find that they aren't just here to open a money-making business. They genuinely care about our community. They really see its potential, and they want to join us in partnership in building up our town on a foundation that we're already setting in place. So we as Alamo Gordo Main Street and the folks you've heard speak here with me, respectfully ask that you support Rad's lead-up application. It is the right project at the right time in the right place, right now. I'm happy to answer any questions, and once again, I just thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and staff for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Where is the can you explain to everyone where the exact location is going to be?
Sure, no problem. Do you know where Alamo Jump is? Do you know where, okay, so if you're going down 10th Street towards the Weird Onion Dome Building, so you're driving away from the mountains, you're going down 10th Street, there's the Onion Dome Building, which is also going to be something awesome, but I'm not allowed to talk about it yet. If you were to hang a left onto New York Avenue, say you're going towards Victoria or Farmers or Infinity Suites, then the street's open. You hang a left down there, you're going to go past the 900 block, so you're going to go across Ninth Street, and then you're going to go down about halfway through the 800 block. So before you hit Eighth Street, it's going to be located right there. Currently, based on Google Maps, it is about a 25-minute walk from the high school, and it's about 28 minutes from First Street and about the same from Indian Wells. So very centrally located.
Thank you.
No problem.
Or we can just say the Old Broadway Fashions Building.
The Old Broadway Fashions Building, that's right.
With the mezzanine, right?
That's right.
I think that's a lost art. Does anyone do buildings even have mezzanines anymore? Anyway, okay. Anybody have any questions, or do you want to wait until we get to the I don't know? Go ahead.
Well, I wanted to, I brought a paper tonight thinking that it was all the highlighted events that are that's happening downtown. But since you are talking about Rad, can you just explain what else is going on downtown? The facade, you know, project, and I know you have the the streets, but there's a couple of things going on down there that might, you know, showcase what is happening to bring in new businesses.
Yes, of course. So first off, I got to give humongous kudos to my boss and our Chair President for being recognized nationally for her leadership of nonprofits. So kudos to Claudia Loyah, who gets mad at me every time I bring it up. But kudos to her, that's a big deal. It is the most honorable award that Main Street America can give to a person, and Claudia Loyah is the first person in New Mexico to receive it, and she is also the first person in Main Street America's history who's a volunteer to receive that leadership award. So kudos to her. Additionally to that, obviously, we have the the construction going on. Things are going really well, actually. If you want to pop down there and look at our sidewalks that are going in, we're really excited. The business owners are ecstatic that sidewalks are going in. On top of that, as a part of trying to leverage the impact of the massive investment from the state and the city, we have created a grant program for it's called Facade Squad. It's Main Street jargon, but basically what it is, is it's a matching grant program. So business owners and property owners downtown, they if they want maybe a new awning, or they want a facelift on the front of their building, new paint, whatever it is, new doors, whatever, they can apply for us for funding. Whatever funding we give, they must match. So let's say the total cost of the renovation is 5,000. Main Street would put forth 2,500, and the business owner would put forth 2,500 to get that facelift done on the buildings. And the goal with that grant program is that when the street opens, you know, I like to say that the street is like the picture frame, but it's the buildings that's actually in the middle that we actually care about showcasing. And so we're going to have a beautiful new picture frame. Let's do what we can to make the picture of our beautiful buildings really worth the picture frame, right? On top of that, we currently have murals going in on the Eastern Alley. They are in process right now. A couple of the muralists are actually already complete that project. To beautify that alley on the 900 block was funded by 100 Women Who Care, and we are chugging right along. That'll be six murals total that'll be going in on that alley to beautify the alley. And when you put it next to our beautiful new pavement that we have in the alley, the goal is to make it part of a walking tour that will eventually spread through downtown. We're partnering with the Tularosa Basin Historical Society to put on historic placards around the district so that it can become its own walking tour. We have been chosen to host the New Mexico Main Street Institute in the fall, in October, October 15 through the 17th. This is a moment where all the Main Street communities are asked to join together for training and professional development. It's a big deal. We were chosen this time. We were specifically chosen because of our Great Blocks Project. We were specifically chosen because of the amazing partnership we have shown with the city and how fantastic our project manager and our city manager have been during the process. And so we were chosen to showcase what that looked like, how we got here, and hopefully teach other Main Street communities how to replicate what we've done. And this one is particularly important because it is New Mexico Main Street's 40th anniversary of existence. So we will be also hosting an awards ceremony and a huge celebration to celebrate with them that they have existed in New Mexico for 40 years. So it's very prestigious, actually, that we were chosen to host this time. I'm trying to think. Did I forget anything, boss boss lady?
Do we have a date, Nolan?
For which thing?
Completion, when this program is going to happen?
The institute or the construction?
Both. Anything, give me a date.
So construction is estimated for November right now, and...
To be completed.
Yes.
Okay.
You'll have to ask Justin, though, for exact contract dates, because I don't have that in the back of my head. That's our city project manager.
And the institute is going to be?
October 15 through the 17th.
Thank you.
So it's very exciting. So I think that about covers it. Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. And I'm going to switch things up a little bit because I have some special guests here tonight, and I just feel like they don't want to sit here and listen to our city business. I feel like they probably want to get home and dream about all those arcade games. So, okay, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. So I'm going to switch things up. I'm going to move us over to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission, and then I'm going to take a liberty and introduce some special guests. So and then we'll get to public comment, I promise. So if you'll go through for just a moment. So, yes. Come on up. So, yes. Come on up. I really try to pay attention. Okay. I really try to pay attention. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Rachel. That was great. Okay, is this on? All right. I really try to pay attention to what's going on around town. I and I always laugh at the people that say there's nothing to do in Alamo Gordo because, trust me, I can't keep up with it all. But one of the things I found, it's been what, maybe a month ago now, I think, about a month ago?
Early April.
Yeah, early April, is I was reading a story about a powerlifting team. How many of you knew we even had a powerlifting team at the high school?
I did.
Okay, besides parents, that's not fair. And besides our school board president, who better know? We had a powerlifting team at the high school. All right. So I was like, wow, that's really cool. And you know what was even cooler is these girls that are part of this powerlifting team won the state championship. I'm like, holy smokes, that is just so cool. And I have been wanting to get them here. I really wanted to get in the last meeting. It didn't work out. It was too late. So I have brought them here tonight because they deserve all the recognition. At first, I'd like to introduce their coaches, or if you would like to introduce yourselves. This guy scares me a little bit.
I'm not intimidated by much.
I'm Austin Dress. I'm the head coach. And this is this is Scott Singleton, the assistant coach.
And we have a coach here somewhere, don't we?
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. All right. There is one more coach, though. Is that right?
Yes, you have Rachel Montoya, and you have the best lifting coach, Alamo Gordo. My wife, April.
Well, there you go. There you go. All right. And so I am really excited to introduce your state championship powerlifting team from Alamo Gordo High School. Okay. And so, let's see. Do we have McKenzie? Is McKenzie here? McKenzie, McKenzie took second, right? Individually, this is individually, right? Okay, individually. Madison? Madison took a second place individually. Liliana? Ah, there she is, second place. Davaya? Hi there. Third place, Addison. Addison Cisco, are you related to Coach Cisco? Oh, I know him. Is he here? No, he's not here. No, he's not here, right? I didn't think I'm like, no, I would have known that. Okay. Addison took third. And then Alejandra. Alejandra took first place. So I wanted to make sure that we as a city recognize each ladies. I do think that's really important, and I want you to know that we're super proud of you, and we're proud to have you represent our community. It's a it's a big deal for us, right? I mean, anybody can be Alamo Gordo. But I'd rather be Alamo Gordo. So thank you for representing us. You certainly represent the best of Alamo Gordo. So I do have some certificates, Coach Strups. There you go, sir. I feel like there's probably another coach certificate. If not, I'll get it to you, I promise. Okay. Alejandra. There you go. Alejandra Maya. Addison Cisco. McKenzie Stett. There you go. Liliana. There you go. Haley. Haley Evans, is she here? Haley? Hi, Haley. Okay, Casey? Oh, Casey. All right. Riley?
Right here.
Right here. Oh, hi there. Okay. Reagan?
She's behind me.
Okay, Reagan's not here. Davaya? There you go. Madison? Hello? Daviana? Is it Daviana? Did I say that right? Not here? Okay. Brooklyn? Love that name. So pretty. There you go. And Coach, I need to get you a certificate. I apologize for that. And did I get everybody? Did I get all the girls? All right. So once again, if you will give it up for our state champion. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here. Congratulations, coaches. You've done a wonderful job. And girl power, I'm just saying. I'm ju I mean, I'm just saying, like, you know, anyway. All right. Congratulations, guys. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to give you these. Somebody want to give that to your teammates? All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for indulging me. I just knew that they just did not want to be here all night listening to our stuff. So thank you, guys. Congratulations. Okay. And that was remarks and inquiries. So does anybody have anything else?
From the?
From remark from remarks from the Commission or?
Yeah, I do. I do. I do.
I just wanted to, well, it's three months almost until we have our our annual cleanup. And so I just wanted to let you know that we are working on getting today, let me put it this way. I announced that Districts 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 were participating, and I think we do have enough people to man the stations. This is going to be on July 19. It starts at 7 o'clock in the morning. It ends at 12. We will use our headquarters again at Dudley School, which is at 523 Maryland Avenue. So we have a couple of, I'm not going to mention all of the the stations that we have, but I did see our Senator, Nick Paul. He participated last year, and he said that whatever he could do to help make it successful for 2025, he's willing to do. So I'm going to be calling on him to help us out. But I just wanted to say I'm really
I announced that Districts 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 were participating, and I think we do have enough people to man the stations. Uh, this is gonna be on July 19th. It starts at 7 o'clock in the morning, it ends at 12. Uh, we will use our headquarters, again, at Dudley School, which is at 523 Marilyn Avenue. Uh, so, we have a couple of, uh, I, I'm not gonna mention all of the, the stations that we have, but, uh, I did see, um, our senator, Nick Paul. He participated last year. And he said that whatever he could do to help make it successful for 2025, he's willing to do. So, I'm gonna be calling on him to help us out. Uh, but, uh, I just wanted to say, I'm really grateful for the commissioners here on, uh, the, on staff here, my co-hosts. Uh, I'm just so happy that they are participating and seeing that we do have a need in, in town to bring this forward. And so, I, I wanted to say, there are guidelines. We are catering to the seniors, our veterans, disabled, anybody that's sick and been in the hospital, we're working with them. Uh, and we have been sponsored, again, this year by the Sacramento Mountains Foundation. And also, we have help from Amy Tilson, who is at State Farm. So, I'm, I'm really pleased that we have, uh, you know, people who are working with us. Uh, this year, we're, we're also gonna have Holloman Air Force Base working with us. And so, um, we're, we're gonna try to get everything out. And I'm asking for, uh, before we started doing our communication, uh, I wanted to make sure that we included all of the commissioners and have them put something on there that, uh, you know, lets them know that they're working in their district. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, uh, today, Channel 9 from El Paso is here. And they visited the zoo, Dudley School, and the museum downtown. And, um, the site, I don't know what the, what are those videos called that were dumped out at the?
Atari?
Atari. So, they went to that site also. So, they are going to be doing a, um, I guess, an airing on June 9th or 10th, uh, next month to show the sites here in Alamogordo. So, we have Main Street, we have, uh, the zoo, we have Dudley School, we have the museum, we have Main Street, and a lot of other things that are happening here. So, um, you know, I said, this cleanup is just going to be, uh, an added addition to show that we really care about the city of Alamogordo, and we want to make it, uh, you know, beautiful for people coming here. Not only for, um, the, uh, the big conference in October, uh, but we want to complement everything that's going on here. So, I want to say thank you, but, uh, we need your help, volunteers. If you have, uh, tools that you want to donate for the day, we'll take those and use them. But, um, we want to make this more successful. We had over 50 people last year, so we want to make it even bigger this year. So, I, I look forward to all the help that we get from the commission, the city, and from our community. Thank you.
So, the El Paso TV station, I'm assuming that's KTSN? Out of El Paso came, when was that?
Last year?
I think it was last year, and did the Space Center and some other things, and, um, I think the Flickinger. They said, "We had no idea there was so much to do in your city." So, they said, "We need to come back because we need to make this longer." And so, I'm excited that they're, they're finally doing that, because they just did not understand what we had to offer here in Alamogordo. And, and once they got here, they were, they were pretty surprised, so, that's exciting. Anyway, does anybody else have anything? Yes?
Uh, I was contacted by Cindy at the pool hall, and I guess she had concrete ramps leading up to her top step before we tore at the sidewalk. And she was wondering if she's getting them back.
Hello, good evening. Still tend to that question, she will not be getting a ramp again. Um, the ramp that she had prior was not actually 88 ramp, and it was just concrete poured on top of the right-of-way sidewalk. Yeah, to try to do something like that, it would be really difficult, because then I would have to do it to Dr. Moezy's building and everybody else, so...
Okay.
It would be, he'll change elevations as well, so...
So, you're gonna contact her and let her know?
I, I've mentioned it to her, she's called me, like, five times. I've told her multiple times that it's really hard to do so because as, it's encroaching on, so, downtown, you only have six inches off of your building.
Right.
Or property lines. So, for me to actually put a ramp to her building, I'm technically giving private property, um, concrete, so...
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Sorry, anybody else? No? Okay. All right, so now, we're gonna go back to public comment. Um, I have four people signed up. Um, we'll just take them in order. You will have three minutes. If you'll come up to the mic, state your name for the record, and, um, you'll have three minutes. And our first one is, is it Azar? Azar? Okay, I want to make sure I'm saying that right. Rangel.
Uh, good evening, my name is Azar Johnhead. I am...
I definitely did not say it like that, sorry.
I am, uh, I am a board member with Alamogordo Main Street, but I am coming today to speak to you as a business owner on Main Street in support of Rad Retrocade. Um, I moved to Alamogordo in 2020 because I fell in love with an amazing baker. And, uh, she had her bakery, um, money cakes over at the Granada Center. Uh, the world was shut down when I moved here. And in the middle of the pandemic, we moved to 904 New York due to unforeseen circumstances. Little did we know that it was going to be a blessing because shortly after moving there, um, we found out about Grapebox, the project that we are going through right now. Now, we're going through similar hardships now, but back then, we had no idea of when the world was gonna reopen. We had no idea of when things were gonna get better. Now we do. We have deadlines, and we have a vision, and we see the pictures of what's coming. We have other projects on the street that are gonna be beneficial to, um, that are ongoing already. We have Rad Retrocade that is possibly coming. And we're excited. We are truly excited about something like this. Um, because, me coming from El Paso, I was a lifelong, born and raised in El Paso. I grew up without options. I grew up with dining and entertainment options. Turn the corner one way, turn the corner another way. We still go regular, my parents lived down there. So, Monica and I, we actually go down there on a regular basis, at least once a month. And we spend the night, because we have options over there. Options that we don't have here. But little by little, I see them coming. And now I've firmly planted my roots in Alamogordo because I see how the community is coming together. Especially in downtown, as you can see, we have multiple business owners down here. We all support each other, we, I hope I speak for all of us, we all support this project, and we are looking forward to it. And we look forward to working together and continue working together as a community, as a downtown community, as an entire community, to better Alamogordo and have the people that come from El Paso to drive to Redoso, hey, you know what? Stop. There's stuff to do here, too. And that's where, where the excitement is. And, uh, we just ask that you allow us to have this opportunity to better our downtown area and better Alamogordo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I didn't get a chance to say hi, but hi. All right. Vivian? Boyle? Did she drill the short straw, or she just volunteered? She's adorable, so it's okay.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Hello, my name is Vivian Boyle, and I think that an arcade downtown would be amazing because me and my brother could ride our bikes there together without having to wait for a ride to the other arcade place. It would be so fun for me and my brother. We could play lots of fun games together. And that is why I think Alamogordo should have an arcade downtown.
I mean, you want, like, candy? Could I get you a cupcake? Maybe Rachel could throw something in, too? No, okay, fine, all right. Okay, Reverend Michael Hopkins.
Good evening, mayor and esteemed commissioners. I'm Reverend Michael Hopkins from Owen Chapel L.A. Church. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening, not just as a concerned citizen, but as someone who loves Alamogordo and believes in its divine potential. Today I rise not in protest of progress, but with a heavy heart and a concerned spirit about the kind of growth that we are embracing while we are still considering cannabis dispensaries. We have not shown sometimes the same urgency that brings in real industry, manufacturing to our city. Right now, Otero County has more than a dozen dispensaries. Yet our industrial park sits underdeveloped. We have wide open land along the Lalo's Gate Road, prime access to US Highway 54, and a workforce that's underemployed and commuting out of town just for an opportunity to come to them. Meanwhile, other cities are moving. Las Cruces uses LEEDA funds to attract stampede meat, creating over 300 jobs. Roswell secured narrow space manufacturer. Carlsbad is becoming an energy tech hub. But here in Alamogordo, we seem content with businesses that trade in cash and quick highs instead of building long-term prosperity. Scripture says, in Proverbs 29 and 18, "Where there is no vision, the people will perish." We need a vision bigger than dispensaries. Manufacturing offers more than just jobs, it offers careers. It builds a tax base, it lifts entire families out of generational poverty. A single manufacturing plant can support hundreds of households and dozens of secondary businesses, from trucking to restaurants to housing development. And Ecclesiastes 3:1 reminds us to everything, there is a season. My brothers and sisters, this is the season to shift from what is easy to what is essential. This is the time for our, to turn our attention from what is popular to what is powerful for our economy, for our children, and for our future. So I say this, let's be bold. Let's partner with the Economic Development Council. Let's use our voice in Santa Fe to continue fighting for LEEDA funds. Let's roll out the welcome mat for clean, light manufacturing, not just to say we tried, but to prove we believe in the future of Alamogordo. When jobs come, families stay. When families stay, schools thrive. When schools thrive, the neighborhood rises. And when the neighborhood rises, the whole city rejoices. "For I know the plans that I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, to give you a future and a hope." Let's stop settling for survival, it's time for revival. Economic revival, industrial revival, and community revival. Thank you, and God bless Alamogordo.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, but I need to say something. I want to make it clear, number one, we don't invite dispensaries here, but we can't stop them. Legally, we're not allowed to. And I have been very boisterous about how I feel about them. But, the state says that we're not allowed to stop them. We have to let them come here. I've asked for a moratorium, I've asked for it to stop, and I can't. We are working on a infrastructure improvement and replacement plan that hasn't been done in, how many years is that now? Decades? Decades, okay? Because we recognize that if we don't do that first, all of those things that you talked about aren't gonna matter. And unfortunately, in the past, the can has been kicked down the road. But, if you have spent any time inside these commission chambers or paying attention to, and I, this is not a diss, but if you paid attention to what is going on, we have spent much, much time, and we have a $350 million plan to replace, um, aging infrastructure. Did I say that right? $350 million, I want to make sure I'm getting my numbers right, to replace aging infrastructure. Once that's completed, we do believe we can grow. I believe in growth. Um, I believe in sustained growth. Um, I, I take issue with being compared to Las Cruces, New Mexico, because there are many parts of Las Cruces, New Mexico, that I am glad we're not like. Believe me. Um, I wouldn't want to be like them, and I've been vocal about that, too. I don't have a problem saying that. Um, but we are working incredibly hard in our community to bring business. We do have a, uh, the number three ramp manufacturer in the, in the country, right down the road at Highway 54 and 70. It doesn't look like anything is going on there, down there, but there's many jobs being created down there. Um, and that's just the beginning. We just signed with End of the Mountain Gods to run our, um, Family Entertainment Center. That was a, really, about a $9 million, $8 million facility. Um, we've signed with them, and we truly believe that by doing that, the reach is gonna be incredible. Not just in Alamogordo, but in Texas, um, Arizona, Colorado. Their reach is everywhere, and we believe that that will spur some interest in our community. Um, so, I, while I appreciate everything that you said, um, I would encourage you to spend more time here in our commission chambers during these meetings and paying attention because we have done nothing but work incredibly hard the last, certainly the last year, for sure, um, and even longer to ensure that we are doing everything we can. And there is an energy in this city right now, like I haven't seen in a long time. People are excited about what is going on. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce, um, we're working with the Alamogordo Public Schools, and many other, um, government entities. We're working with our state legislatures. And we are bringing industry to Alamogordo. But unfortunately, when you've had leadership in the past that, um, have been content with status quo, um, you spend a lot of your time trying to catch up, and that's what we've done. But I assure you that we are working incredibly hard. And, and again, I would encourage you to spend more time in the commission chambers or at least online, watching our meetings, studying, looking at what we're doing because, um, the, the amount of, of work has been just incredible. So, thank you, though, for your comments, I appreciate it. We're gonna move on, Jarrett Perry, with the Alamogordo Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Dr. Hernandez. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. First of all, I feel like we should pull Vivian back up so she can grab the mic and just drop it and walk away, so... True incoming champion of Alamogordo, right there. So, retired superintendent of schools, high school principal, athletic director, coach, spent over a million miles on that yellow dog chasing that elusive championship ring and, and bringing it back to the community. So incredibly proud of those young ladies. We fought a lot of great fights, didn't we, to, to have some opportunities for our kiddos? And so, I'd like to switch gears just a little bit, and I want to be very specific to my wording. Um, but now I'm the, now I'm the executive director. I'm no longer an athletic director or superintendent or high school principal. But Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Dr. Hernandez, um, the Alamogordo Chamber of Commerce is proud to endorse the establishment of Rad Retrocade. A dynamic new business poised to bring energy, economic vitality to our community. We believe Rad aligns with the spirit of growth and entrepreneurship that defines the Alamogordo Chamber of Commerce in particular. We are com, we are confident in its potential to create local opportunities, enhance the business landscape, and contribute meaningful, meaningfully to the city's continued development. We respectfully encourage the support and consideration as Rad takes the next steps in becoming a valued part of the Alamogordo thriving business community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, I think that was it. Yep, the city manager's report?
Good morning, mayor, mayor pro temp, commission.
No, not good morning. No, no, I don't want to start over.
You're right. Good evening.
I'm tired, sorry.
I had a morning this morning. Um, I just gotta say, like, I had a proud mama moment. Like, I try and keep my kids away from city business, but my kid was adamant on supporting Rad, so I told him, "Work with Nolan," and so I was like, that was a proud mama moment for me. Um, I want to say... I want to say, I want to brag on the senior center. They did a phenomenal job this weekend on their 30th anniversary. There was 600-plus people. I took my dad, who doesn't get out much, he can't walk, and then he was dancing. I'm like, who is this man? It was just a good time. People didn't want to leave. People were, it was standing room only in the dining room. It was phenomenal. So I just have to brag on Magdalena and them for pulling that off. That was fantastic. To clarify, I think downtown being done, we're shooting for October, not November, if I'm correct. I just wanted to clarify that. And then, just a quick update on 10th and Washington. I know that's been a conversation you guys have probably have had with a lot of residents, as most of staff have. We had a meeting last week. We had our on-call engineer come in, a structural engineer, and then we had DOT help with, kind of guide some of this process. We believe there's a temporary fix so that we can get that open, so that we can engage in our 25-year flood plan, so that we don't, the plan itself is probably going to take up to a year, so of course, that's not feasible to keep 10th Street closed for a year or so. They came up with a solution, a safe solution for everyone. We'll start that on June 12th, and we, and that's due to the contractor's schedule, and then we will hopefully finish that by July 19th, so to get it patched up and open by July 19th. And the last thing I want to say is, Monna Cakes and Infinity Suites, if you all haven't tried them, they're amazing. Monna Cakes has pulled off last-minute birthday cakes for me. Awesome, beautifully done, and every time Justin goes downtown and doesn't bring me a brownie, I threaten to fire, fire him, because he's right there at Infinity Suites, so that's all I got.
I know. It is kind of dangerous having them so close together. Anyway, okay. All right, we're going to move on to the, I believe I covered all of those, even though I did them out of order. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to pull off the consent agenda?
Well, six and seven.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Do I have a motion to approve items two, three, four, and five on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Can we put up the vote, please? Hi.
Hi.
Item six.
So can my daughter answer these questions?
I'm sorry, motion passes 7-0. Did I say that? In case I didn't, motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to item six, pulled off the consent agenda.
There's notice on your, your bid tab here, these two bids are $400,000 apart.
Yes, so KNG is normally a horizontal kind of company. This is more of a vertical project. So Perimeter Ironwork, the one that bid it lower, they actually have no subcontractors. They're doing everything by themselves.
They're doing it in-house.
Yeah, so KNG, of course, you know, as you saw them doing Hubbard Bridge, they're more horizontal. They have to have a lot of subcontractors. So that's kind of where the price change.
Are these the only two responsive bidders we had on the project?
Yes. All questions were answered during the bid process. Addendums were put out, and they're the only two that ended up bidding.
How much money do we have in the fund for this project?
So for the grant that we have on, that's remaining on this fence, of course, we had to spend the rest of the grant. It was $18,000 short of what's on here, so we would just need an additional 18 plus the tax, because the tax is excluded from this, but.
So another 30?
Give or take, yeah, from the.
15 grand in tax?
Yes, yes.
So.
Because this is only Bid Lot 1 from that project, because it was designed all the way out to the full west side, as well as the south. But on Bid Lot 1, we stopped right there where the duck pond ends and where the birds, the bird cages are.
Okay.
This will actually help us get out of, well, at least that part of the wall will be part, taken out of Union Pacific right away. So that's one step getting closer from being completely out of there right away as well.
And then, is Bid Lot 2 going to be the duck pond, or?
No, so Bid Lot 1 is the duck pond wall.
I meant by the actual duck pond.
No, the duck pond has its own separate design, because that's a different grant. So that would be put out for bid as well on a separate.
So it'd be a separate bid, okay.
Yes, I have to do it in order this way, just because of the duck pond design. It has a four-inch PVC from the duck pond to the wastewater, to the sewer. So with that one, it's going to be a bigger PVC. So to do that properly, I have to get this one done, because of the sleeve that's going to go either in the wall or the footing, depending on where it's at, and then proceed that way.
And we're pretty confident that they can do it for that number?
Yes, so I did my research on kind of.
No change orders?
I've had, not contractors, but just big companies calling me, asking me if this was a real thing, and told them, yes, that's all I can tell them. They're not contractors, of course, so I think that they can.
You feel confident we could do it?
Yeah, especially the fact that it's pretty simple. I mean, it's mostly a lot of old demo, I mean.
Okay, I just, that's, that's a big spread between the two, two estimates.
Well, yeah, and like I said, this is a company that does only brick. I mean, the other ones, of course, they do iron, like fencing as well, but KNG, you know, like I said before, they do horizontal work, so they're more streets, utilities, concrete, that kind of work, so when you get into the more vertical, it changes your whole.
It's interesting that they would bid it, yeah.
And I can't stop anybody from bidding, you know?
If it's not their, their forte, I don't know why they would even bid it, but.
You know, sometimes people like to try to bid on, have subcontractors. I mean, I can't stop anybody from bidding. That's the beauty of bidding, is everybody has a fair share of being able to bid. And, I mean, regardless of the fact, they did get beat, so buy a lot, so.
Gacy, that'll, that'll work. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item six?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to item seven, consider and act upon approval of change order one in the amount of $247,695,44 to Lalo's Dirt and Paving. And I believe you had questions on that.
Yeah, I just, I understand us extending the water line and everything over off of the new road into the project, like the drive aprons and all of that. We don't even have a design yet, do we?
So we do have, so I've actually worked with Rusty, which is the engineer for Oregon Project. Then I also worked with the architect that's doing the auditorium. The surveyor that they're using is SMA for the pool. So I've been working with both of them. Actually, I've had this on, in my computer for about past month, I do believe, but I wanted to make sure that I had everything I needed from both sides. I've been working with both of them, making sure that wherever this dry pad is, is where it's going to be at. Same thing with the water lines, because there's a two, four, and a six-inch water line going into the auditorium for obviously different reasons.
Yes.
So when it comes to location, everything is in the proper position.
Okay, what about sewer? I didn't see anything, sewer lines running there.
So the sewer line was not part of this, because it's a, it's in a different area, so.
It's still in Oregon Avenue, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm not too sure about the sewer, so I'm going to have to figure out exactly where that sewer is going to go, because I do believe the sewer is on the east side, if I'm not mistaken, closer to the ditch.
I think it's running through the ditch.
It runs through the ditch?
Yeah.
I thought that was a affluent line.
It's affluent, there's affluent and the sewer on that side.
Okay, I just, your reasoning is behind it, so we don't have to cut into a brand-new road when we build it.
Yes, exactly. I'm trying to just plan ahead, because when this project is completed and in design, the auditorium, I don't want to have to worry about coming back to you guys, asking for additional money to tear out the road, so I'd rather get it done correctly this time and.
Get it at least stubbed past the back of the curb.
Correct. And the additional drive pads on here, one was, is the crosswalk and the ADA ramp that's on 16th. As you heard before about the potential basin that might be in that area, you know, it's, I'll get into more on that later down the line when I get a presentation for the drainage system. But that's just for ADA ramp, to have a crosswalk there for future, and then the.
It's 16th Street or 14th Street?
16th.
16th.
16th, right there, where they currently have all their pipes and everything out right now. And then, of course, the other two dry pads were where the Girl Scout building is, because that was part of the ICIP. I just wanted to get that, those dry pads replaced properly, because I saw that on the ICIP list for the next fiscal year, which is coming up in July, so I just wanted to knock those dry pads out to where we're not having to turn to the road.
That wasn't part of the original scope of, of the Oregon Avenue deal?
There, it was supposed to be some things that were, like, certain dry pads, certain curbs, not all of it, though. It was more of a WRSP, which is the Water Sewer Replacement, depending on where it's at. So when it came to the concrete side of it, sidewalks, dry pads, curb, it was more of what was damaged and what needed to be replaced compared to, you know, so that, those dry pads, I knew that they were, they're, they're okay, they're not the best, but at the same time, like I said, I don't want to have to tear those dry pads out if we proceed on the ICIP list for next fiscal year on the Girl Scout building and then having to rip those out again. So I was just looking forward to different projects that I see in the future with the city to where I'm not having to rip it out again.
And so what I was a little worried about is if something changes on the, on the auditorium that we end up ripping out.
Yeah, no, so the auditorium is, wherever it's at, that's where it's at. They both contractors, I mean engineers, sorry, they have the same plans, they have the same coordinates, everything, so.
Aren't they still designing the auditorium, though?
Yeah, no, they're designing the auditorium, but where it comes to site plan, exactly where the parking lot is, they're building it based off of dry pad first, and then on the north side of that dry pad is where the auditorium will be. Same thing with the water lines, so wherever the engineer, which is Rusty from Smith Engineering, wherever he's putting those three lines, the architect's using from those three lines to tie into the auditorium properly, just so it all works out, because.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Other questions? Okay, no other questions? I, do I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
What was that? I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. And motion passes 7-0. And now for the moment we've all been waiting for. We'll move on to item eight, under new business, consider and act upon ordinance 1712 for first publication to approve a local economic development project for up to $1 million secured assistance proposed by RAD Retrocade. Is Alex here? I figured that was you, but I didn't want to make an assumption.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Alex Macias. I'm the owner of RAD Retrocade in Las Cruces, El Paso, and the two locations in El Paso. This is Nicole Hernandez. She's our general manager. My wife and I is right-hand person. We couldn't do anything without her, and she is actually a business partner with us with another venture in El Paso. So I'm here to give you guys a little bit of, more of a intro, look into RAD and what it's all about. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your very kind words and your support from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate seeing you all, and thank you very much for that. So. See? Me, Nicole. So what is RAD? RAD is a very family-oriented business. In El Paso, you have a string of bars that just open up, just, they try to get as many people in there as they can, nothing special about them. They open and close, open and close. They don't have a very long life in El Paso, but there's a ton of bars in El Paso. I didn't open up RAD because of drinking. I don't even drink. I'm, I have a love 80s arcades. I loved them since I was young. That was the whole purpose of opening RAD, was to open up an arcade, and no one's just going to go to an arcade, so my wife was like, we need to offer alcohol as well. At the time when we opened a RAD 10 years ago, there's only three arcade bars in the country that we could even look at. It was first called Rubix at a time we felt went to Rubix. Rubix is actually what turned into RAD. So we changed the name from Rubix to RAD when Las Cruces launched, so now all of our stores are now, are now RAD. It's a very nostalgic, I'm a very nostalgic person. I grew up in the 80s, grew up with arcades, so RAD is a very nostalgic place. It's, the walls covered with pictures of Edward Scissorhands, ET, Back to the Future, The Breakfast Club. Anthony Michael Hall actually came into RAD in Las Cruces from The Breakfast Club, if you all ever recognize who, remember who that, who he is. He came in and was just, thought this place was awesome, signed the wall, and I thought, well, that's just a very cool moment, Anthony Michael Hall actually came into our business. Next slide. So this is kind of a little, I don't know if it's going to play. It's a little slideshow of kind of what we, what we do.
What button do I press to play the video, Stephanie? There it is.
There you go. Really cool song that went with it, but I guess we can't hear the song.
The volume?
It was an 80s song, just so you know. This is a look at our west side store that's been there now for, for 10 years. It's our first RAD that we opened, and it's kind of really morphed into this. When we first opened, there was only three pictures on the wall. Now we've kind of learned, and if you notice, the walls are covered completely with vinyl wraps, and it's, very good conversations started with people like, oh my gosh, is that Bob from La Bamba? And people just start talking, and it's just kind of a fun thing. Next slide. The nostalgia that RAD creates, when I first opened the bar, about a year after we opened, this, this gentleman walked in, this little boy, probably about seven years old, and he walked him over to, he's like, I gotta introduce you to somebody. I can't, I can't wait to introduce you to this person. So I was like, where's he going? There's nobody in the bar yet, we just opened. He walked this little boy over, and he goes, "This is Donkey Kong." And, and the father actually started getting tears in his eyes, and he was like, "You don't understand how many quarters I put into this. I want to teach you how to play this game." And him and his son played there for about an hour, just playing Donkey Kong. And to me, it was like, that was just total gratification of what we have accomplished, what we did, because it's, I miss those times of going to the arcades where you can socialize with people and things like that. So RAD is a very unique concept in the fact that you have a very family-friendly atmosphere during the day, then at night, you want, it kind of shifts automatically, because the kids are going to go home. I go home at 8:30, too, so that kind of shifts into the younger crowd, and then it becomes more of a nightlife place. We have, you know, we have music videos playing and things like that. We have DJs at night. So it really kind of crosses over all spectrum. So when you ask about the age range of RAD, it's anywhere from 15 years old to 55 years old. So it really kind of creates this nostalgia that people like. Retro is still very much in. So that's what we kind of try to, we try to create an experience, not just a bar. We want people to walk in and be like, I remember this, conversation starters, things like that. You can take people back in time. And I have some really cool ideas for Alamogordo. For the building we have there, we have some really neat ideas to kind of really even bring it more so than we have in our other locations as well. Next slide. RAD's been, I was a school teacher for 17 years before this, so I'm not going to read, you know, the whole PowerPoint to you guys, just going to give you kind of a, a general gist. RAD in El Paso, the west side location's been there for 10 years. Bars in El Paso don't last 10 years. Every bar that opened with us is now closed down, but RAD is still going. After we did RAD, we were called by Las Cruces to come in, because they wanted to revitalize their downtown. So we went to downtown Las Cruces. My wife and I literally sat there for three hours. Eight people walked through their downtown in Las Cruces. I told my wife, what are, what are we thinking? There's nobody down here. My wife says, "If we build it, they're going to come." I was like, this isn't Field of Dreams. This isn't, this is our real life. This isn't some movie, like, they're going to come. Trust me, they're going to come. I'm like, Marty, there's nobody down here. This place is a ghost town. It was a Friday night, and we just sat there. We saw homeless people walking up and down, we saw other people walking out. Nobody was down there to do anything downtown. And my wife actually was the one that really pushed me, like, you know what? This community needs it. So what Las Cruces did was they hired a person to come in downtown, and they said, "In this building, you all need an arcade bar." They contacted us. We went into Las Cruces, and we broke every record from every bar in El Paso and Las Cruces, I think even in New Mexico, of any bar that's opened ever. Our opening month numbers have obliterated any bar that's open in El Paso and in Las Cruces. It was insanely successful. COVID hits, we're closed for 17 months, because we're a bar, so we can't even open anything for 17 months. During that time, businesses were calling me, "Brendan's RAD coming back. We need you all back here. We're going down. We need you all back downtown." During that time, businesses were calling me, Brendan's Rad coming back, we need you all back here, we're going down, we need you all back downtown. Nobody is coming downtown without you all. When we came back, businesses came back up, so Rad has been very, very successful. Las Cruces by far has been our most successful location. El Paso, we have sixteen Peter Piper pizzas, we have Dave and Buster's, we have the new Gamescape, that's this huge arcade that just opened, we have Monkey Rock. Plus, we have over four hundred active liquor licenses in El Paso County that are operating right now. So we have not only competition from people that are doing almost the same thing we're doing, but we have all the other bars as well. In our West Side location, at one point from Cincinnati Street to Executive, there were twenty-three bars within a one and a half mile radius. And that's just, in El Paso, you don't create a bar and all of a sudden, why am I gonna start drinking, does this bar open? It's just a piece of the bike, it's smaller and smaller and smaller. And if you don't figure out a way to make your piece bigger, you're not gonna survive. So the fact that Rad has been here for, uh, ten years in El Paso, uh, we've been open since two thousand nineteen in Las Cruces, and we've been open since two thousand twenty-two on the East Side. We also have plans of doing one in Santa Fe, that's about eighty percent complete, but we are planning to open up in Santa Fe within the next year, if all goes well. Okay, next slide. Revitalize downtown, it's, it speaks for itself, it's completely revitalized the downtown area. One thing we've also done is the Plaza of Las Cruces is right across the street from us, we would throw events there. So same thing with Alamogordo, we would love to do here, I don't want to just be a bar or be a restaurant, you know, block off downtown, throw festivals, bring, bring events down here to where you can block off the streets like we do in Las Cruces, we do in El Paso. We don't do it, but other people do in El Paso, where they block off the streets and you have a festival, everybody comes down for things like that, but you can throw events into downtown, especially with how wonderful your downtown is gonna look. So that's a big opportunity that we also want to take advantage of in Alamogordo. Why Alamogordo? Very un- underserved community. My wife and I would go to Riedoso about maybe three times a month, two, three times a month with my family, we would stop here to eat, but there really was nothing for my kids to do here. The zoo, we would stop by there, but we would be going out, we would be going to Riedoso quite often, and we got to the point where we just went on the bypass and we just went straight to Riedoso. But after the fire last year, we don't go to Riedoso anymore, cause our place is gone, but we were going back and forth, but we never really stopped in Alamogordo, because there's nothing for my kids to do here, I have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old, well, four and six at the time. So I really believe these small communities, if you build it with, with the foresight that, oh, I'm just gonna build a little bar, cause it's a small community, you, you can't approach it like that. You've gotta do it right, you have to do it correct, like you would do it in El Paso, like you would do in Las Cruces, like you would do it in Santa Fe. Our model for Alamogordo here looks exactly, almost exactly like our one in Las Cruces, and our one in Las Cruces is absolutely amazing. I've already had architects go into the building, we have enough space, the building is actually seventeen thousand two hundred square feet is that building. So we can actually, um, I do want to use the mezzanine, cause I think that is such a cool, that's the reason why I bought the building, I, I was like, I want the building, look at the mezzanine, I thought it was so cool. So we're gonna keep the mezzanine in there, but we're really going to, it's gonna be something pretty spectacular. We have the space to do everything we want to do in that space. The downstairs alone is close to nine thousand square feet, which is, I think it's a hundred square feet bigger than our Las Cruces location. But I think Alamogordo would be a perfect place to open, because it is an underserved community, and it gives the soldiers from Holloman a nightlife here that they can do. Beyond the walls of Rad, like we talked about, we want to do the, uh, the events downtown, we want to throw, we did, we do a event called Ratapalooza, tacos and tequila, we did all that kind of stuff in uh, uh, Las Cruces, very, very, very successful. And we want to actually do things for the schools, uh, we have now, in Las Cruces, we have a lot of the schools call us to have field trips there and things like that, and they bring classes of students. They bring teams and sports teams and things like that there to do things at Rad, so we like to do a lot of that stuff here as well. Okay, the job creation, um, this is kind of a rundown of how many jobs we offer. We've had our projected revenue that we have here. I expect, because of population, I don't expect the Las Cruces numbers, Las Cruces has a Division One university, plus they have a population of over one hundred and five thousand people. But we do have a substantial, uh, population of close to thirty-eight thousand people in Las Cruces, we also have the population of Tlalrosa, the population of Riedoso, Cloudcroft, Odeteo County, I think if we make it, to quote my wife, if we build it cool enough, they will come, and I think we can draw all those communities.
And we have airmen, so.
And you have airmen, so Holloman is a huge, huge reason also to want to come in as well. The number of employees that we have, can you go back one slide, Nicole? Number of employees we have, that will just give us kind of our, our revenue, um, of how things are going in El Paso and in Las Cruces up to twenty twenty-four. Okay, next slide. So Alamogordo, uh, we, our projections here, twenty employees, two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in annual payroll, one point seven five million dollars is what we project to do here. This is based on our numbers and population of El Paso and Las Cruces. We can pay the Lita grant back, we had it at one point eight, which would pay back in seven years, but with a million dollars, we, we assume we can pay that back within four to five years, the Lita grant, through the payroll. Job projections, um, projected employees, twenty, bi-re weekly payroll will be about ninety-seven hundred dollars, projected annual again, nine, two hundred fifty-two thousand, one point seven five million, that's just a breakdown of what we're expecting for Alamogordo. This is a biggie, the joint collaboration with the Fund Center. We cannot come in here and start going to war with the Fund Center, that cannot happen. We have got, I've already talked to Frizell, Frizell, the, the two names, I've talked to him a couple of times, and I said, look, this is what we're doing, what are you gonna be doing? We do not want to come here and start trying to, well, you know, where they're gonna have this, where we're gonna have this the same day, and you're gonna do this, or we're gonna do this. That happens in El Paso with, with, with Speaking Rock and the, and the Tiguas in El Paso, and it's, it gets really nasty. A bar was gonna bring Salt and Pepper, they brought them for free a month earlier and just destroyed, I mean, it's, things like that happen all the time. They have the money to pretty much bury anybody they want to in El Paso, and it, it causes a lot of friction, so a lot of things going on with Speaking Rock in El Paso. So Frizell, Frizell, I told him, look, I'm not gonna, we can't go, we can't start competing with the Mescaleros and say, well, you're gonna do this, or we're gonna do this, it's not gonna be good for anybody. I said, we're gonna do a lot of arcade, he said, our case is not gonna be that big, we're gonna really focus on bowling.
Right.
Um, things like that, he said, our arcade is gonna be nothing compared, compared to what y'all are gonna be doing. We need to collaborate as far as like, if somebody comes into town, is there anything else to do in town? I'm not gonna say, no, there's nothing else to do, yes, there's a center on the bypass, you can go out there and go bowling, there's a zoo over here, so it's gotta be cross, you have, we have to cross-promote. If we don't, the community is too small, if we start going after each other, it's not gonna be good for anybody. The only thing that's gonna happen is the community's gonna be the one that's gonna be caught in the middle of all of it, and we just don't want to do that. So he's assured me, we run a pizza program, wings, things like that, he says there's a enormous pizza oven inside the Fund Center, so they're doing a pizza thing, but they're gonna scale it back quite a bit, because that's what really our focus is gonna be on, is pizza, wings, things like that for, for parties and things of that nature. But he does want to meet with me more in-depth at this Lita grant does go through, so we can actually start cross-promoting and see what we can do to just really work together. So that's, that's kind of a biggie. Well, do you all have any questions about Rad?
And then to kind of jump in on there, the cross-promotion, it's actually gonna, if passes is gonna be in this contract, but it's already in the Fund Center contract. That they cannot, they have to cross-promote not just any Lita that is awarded, um, any of the, our city events. And it's, and they have to provide, like, if there's an opening night or event at the nineteenth hole or at the zoo, that there's gonna be cross-promotion, cause that's actually gonna be in all the contracts.
Yeah, and I think that there's room for, for both, I can see that, and then there was a third, what's the one that just opened? Mary and Jaylockwood just opened something. And that's a little bit different, though, right? Yeah.
The big difference with the Rad and the Fund Center, the Fund Center is enormous, I've walked in there a few times, and it's a huge building. Bigger is not always better when it comes to things like entertainment venues, they've gotta do things like bowling to make it. When you walk into Rad, my wife is a big proponent in experiences and a vibe. You gotta walk in and, it's just a different experience, it's not gonna be anything like the Fund Center. We were voted best arcade bar over Dave and Buster's two years, Dave and Buster's, there's no vibe, and Dave and Buster's is expensive.
I can't.
You walk into Dave and Buster's, it's loud, it's like you're in a casino, but it's loud and it's expensive.
I, I can't, no, seriously, like, my daughter's like, oh, we're gonna take the grant, grandson, and I'm like, I, do I have to go, like?
I, I walk, I walk into Dave and Buster's and I'll drop a hundred dollars in games in forty-five minutes, and I'm a gamer. And I'm like, did I just spend a hundred dollars, and my, and we need more cards or whatever, Rad is still a token.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that that's the point, you know, I hear a lot of, um, I hear a lot, of course, everybody sees it if you're on social media at all, it's, you know, it's, the city's going down, these businesses are going out, and I keep saying, you know what, they're consumer-driven. This has, the city of Alamogordo cannot make a business successful, it is up to the business owner, and it is up to the consumer to patronize the business, right? And so I'm like, I don't, so we need things like this, people that, you know, are innovative and have an idea, and, and, um, I, I, you know, I am, I, and just speaking only for myself, I'm pretty open about this stuff, because I think that, um, it's the, these are the things we need, and I, and if people are willing to come and invest in our community, I do think we need to support that, so, um, I'm excited about it, I don't know, I'm a big Pac-Man girl, cause like, I remember going down to Seven Eleven and playing Pac-Man when I was a kid, and we're not even gonna tell you how many decades ago that was, but, uh, it was a lot of fun, you know?
We still have.
It does, it is very nostalgic, cause it does remind you of, you know, and asteroids, asteroids? Ever heard of asteroids? Am I being like, really dated now?
No, asteroids was.
Don't laugh at me, I'm getting old, I can't help it, but anyway.
Yeah, we, we, we have asteroids, we have Galaga, Miss Pac-Man, Pac-Man.
Oh, see, I'm like so there already.
See, all those, like, we have Defender, all those games. It's funny, because when I got into arcades, I thought, I'm gonna buy Defender and get good at it, I'm still not good at Defender, it's still so hard, I can't, I can't last more than forty-five seconds on Defender, and I can play games. But it, it's, it is that, it was, but the thing is, that was sad in El Paso, was we started with seventy-three retro arcade games, that's all we had was retro, that's all we did was retro arcades. And it started going down, we started going like, nobody was coming anymore, nobody really cared to just sit there and just play retro arcade games all day long. So then we, that's when we kind of morphed it into, how, how are we gonna get kids to come in? You know, my son likes to play Donkey Kong, but it's my son, and he's grown up with Donkey Kong and things like that. But we really added the, we have our virtual reality games in, in, um, in our East Side location, we have the big Mario Kart's, the big Walking Dead's, Halos, things like that, and that are, the business just shot right back up, because the retro thing is cool, but we just do a section of it to where we have maybe fourteen to sixteen retro games, and the rest of it is redemption things, they can win the claw games, things like that, because that's what brings kids through the door. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, and I remember having a conversation with our, um, former base commander, Colonel Spears, and I remember talking to him, and, and we were, you know, we were like, how do you get the airmen, you know, what, what do we do for the, cause it's, it's always when you're in a military town, of course, you're always, you know, thinking, okay, how do we make the military happy, right? I, I don't really have that, that mindset anymore, but, but he said, you know, he said, the young airmen, he said, they just wanna play their video games. He said, he doesn't, they, he said, forget trying to make them happy, because he said, that's what they wanna do, they wanna go to work, they wanna get off work, they wanna play video games. He said, focus on the families, that's what, you know, that's, and so when you talk about this concept, it really actually encompasses all of that, and so, um, for different reasons, and so that, that's kind of, it reminds me of that conversation I had with him, that, but, you know, we couldn't have envisioned that.
Whenever, whenever I look at opening a Rad, it's not, it's not anything I want to look at opening for a year, let's see what we can make in a year, and then let's close it down. I, I look at my, I have a five-year-old now and a seven-year-old, um, son and daughter, I want to know if there's gonna be a Rad around that they can run when they get older. Like, where is it gonna last for a long, long, long time? Because the, the one thing that does concern me is, you know, I don't want to come in and it's successful for a year, and then, you know, we just don't watch it anymore, it fizzles out and it's done, that's not, that's not our intention. My intention is, can I start a business that my son and daughter can see, that we can drive down fifteen years from now, like, you know, your mom and dad started this twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, and it's still here. That's, so we're very picky about where we want to go and we want, what we want to do. That's why it took us a long time to move into Santa Fe, um, it's gonna, and then this, we thought Alamogordo was perfect, that's why we bought the building, we thought this might be a perfect area, like under, like, under served community, especially with the airmen, things like that there, and there's so many people drive through that go to Riedoso, and they don't stop, they don't stop. So I believe Mr. Hell was saying, like, pull them off of the bypass and get them to stop here and spend money. And that's what I was telling Nicole, as far as marketing, put a billboard on this side of Alamogordo and put a billboard on this side of Alamogordo. Cause the one place I always saw packed, and I don't know if it's the location, but that pistachio place, that place is always busy. I passed by there, I'm like, people love pistachios in New Mexico, because it's always busy.
It's because it's a novelty, it's one of those, like, I can, I can tell you that I had a cousin that just came out to visit, it's the first time she'd been here, and that's one of the places we went, because where do you take somebody who's never been to New Mexico before, you know, not just Alamogordo, but New Mexico? You take them to those kinds of places, because they're unique to, really to our area, you know, I mean, I'm sure.
And my kids would say, Daddy, are we gonna stop at the pistachio? Yes, we'll stop at the pistachio.
Yeah, and they're good too, by the way.
It's good, it's really good, but we, 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 we stop on the way to Riedoso, we stop on the way back from Riedoso, we always stop at the pistachio. So I know it's possible, we just need to get them off the bypass and get them into more of a central part of, from Alamogordo.
I, I have a question. Um, I experienced gamers this past weekend, and they were at GCU in Phoenix, and so they were twelve hours strong and plus. So, uh, kids can stay in, they weren't, uh, in an arcade, but they were in competition. And they can, they left at seven o'clock in the morning, and they got back at nine o'clock that night. So it, it was amazing, um, so we get a chance to see that, but my question is on the, the Lita, uh, I guess the information you supplied for the, uh, financials. It shows the same rate of income for, uh, twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, and I was just wondering, why, why was that? I'm just curious.
As far as the income from, are they the same for the?
It was the income that you projected for Alamogordo. It was the same amount for each year, so it wasn't, it didn't go up, it just stayed the same, and it was repeated, and so.
I'm very, very conservative, I believe it'll grow, like, when you're talking about the growth of Alamogordo, I believe it will go up, but I'm not gonna come in here, I, I've seen like people present things, um, when they were doing the grants in New Mexico, I'm gonna do this much money, I'm very conservative, I, I think it'll grow five to ten percent a year, especially with, I think it'll grow with the growth of the city. But I also have to be realistic, it's gonna be the only place in town as far as the Fund Center, so are people gonna get bored? Are people not gonna, is it gonna not really grow, because it's the only place really to go? But with the city growing, the numbers will grow. I just, I was very conservative, cause I don't know the growth rate of Alamogordo, that's, I don't know what businesses are coming in, I don't know how much the population's coming in. I've heard a rumor that they bought many acres of land to build new housing here, that y'all are gonna be having a lot, uh, more neighborhoods, um, moving into here, and more people are coming into Alamogordo, but I just don't know the growth rate, so I'm not gonna, I don't want to sit here and speculate like, oh, we're gonna have a twenty percent growth, when I don't know what the city's gonna do. That was pretty much why I just kept it the same, because that, that's kind of worst-case scenario, and the Lita grant will still be paid off within the five years.
So you were just trying to keep it, and, yeah, that makes sense.
And I also wanted to know, I, I've been to El Paso, and I know the West Side, it, you, you seem to project, well, the way it was projected on the, um, on the paperwork, it showed that the West Side continues to, I mean, not grow, but it seems to be producing more. What's, what's happening on the East Side, that it, it lost the, uh?
The East Side opened up, it's so, El Paso is such a strange animal when it comes to things like this. We're on the East Side of El Paso, which is completely saturated with bars. There's a bar that came in that was called Soggy Peso, that did close to half a million dollars in revenue the first month they opened. So when you start getting those bars coming in with you, they just draws people, they'll go check it out for a while, then they'll come back, then they'll go check it out for a while, and they'll come back. The West Side location's been there for ten years, so it's pretty much become what you call a staple, so it's pretty much kind of, not going on cruise control, but people always go to the West Side, because it's right there by UTEP, it's a great location, it's the one that everybody knows. As far as East El Paso, the reason why our numbers also dropped was because when they were doing that, all that construction in Montana, they knocked all that off. So we were, that was really affecting everything on Montana, I don't know if y'all been to El Paso, but they built like a, almost like a spur, like a freeway that goes right over Montana. And that was under construction for about a year and a half, about a year after we opened, so that wasn't, a lot of people were staying away from that area of El Paso, going further towards Horizon.
Thank you. I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The question that all the kids want to know, how soon can you get this up and going if you're provided this grant money?
It would take, we've already talked to my, my architect about the plans, um, it's gonna very much mirror Las Cruces, because we have the space. We, um, we don't have the same space in El Paso that we have in Las Cruces. And since it's a building that we own, we can really do some very special things to it. It would take approximately nine months to eleven months to, to complete construction from start to finish, and I'm just being realistic, because we always run into something. Rad, Las Cruces was supposed to open in August of twenty eighteen, we didn't open until June of twenty nineteen.
Yeah, you're working with a special building, so.
Yes, and it was just, and it, the thing that's kind of crazy is, the Rad in Las Cruces was JCPenney. was JCPenney, just like this one was. So it, it's almost the same, the same thing, so.
Are you gonna keep the mezzanine?
Yes, we're gonna keep the mezzanine.
All right, we got some anxious kids, so.
Yes, we gotta keep the mezzanine.
It's nostalgic, right?
Our whole, the thing is, funny you say that nostalgia thing, I wanted to put the retro arcade upstairs with full tables, things like that, so like if you wanna go retro, you go upstairs into the mezzanine and you'll see all the, you know, dartboard, shovelboards, pool tables, all the retro games will be upstairs and then the stuff for the kids will be, will be downstairs.
And then there's like a part of a third floor or something, isn't there?
Yes, it kind of, it's weird.
But it's kind of a mess up there.
That'll be stage two, everything goes well, I'll probably build that into a party facility, but it's just, to open the whole thing at one time is just too much. It's seventeen thousand.
Right, 'cause there, it doesn't, isn't there like offices or something on the?
Yes, there's offices and things up there, it's like seventeen thousand, two hundred square feet, so it's, to build out the whole thing would just be, would not be very cost-effective at all. Our focus will be on the first floor and the mezzanine and that's it to start.
And the mezzanine, yeah, that makes sense.
You can do ghost tours downstairs if you like.
Listen, it's, I changed right now when I went in, it was pretty spooky, so I was like, this is kind of a, this is kind of a spooky building.
Been in there a few times.
But it's, but I, I, when I walked in, we kinda fell in love with the building, so I think it would be, and it's such a great location. And seeing downtown ripped up, I'm thinking to myself like, thank God we're not open right now, but it's so cool to see like, wow, they're, they're building the downtown and I think it's gonna be a really cool.
And you, I know that the streets are messed up, but to me, it's just not that big of a deal to walk, I don't.
Yeah, it's just, I walked through the.
I can't imagine losing customer, I don't know, I'm like.
It's really, the, the thing also I love about the building is those department store window fronts that they have, I wanna keep those. And what I wanted to do in those was, I kept all my toys from when I was a kid, like my Castle Grayskull and everything, I wanna set all those up in those windows, so if people walk by, it's kind of a museum thing, when they walk by, like, is that Castle Grayskull in the window? Is that a Rubik's Cube? Is that, like all these toys from the eighties, these artifacts to kind of draw you in, and you'll see it on those two windows when you walk in. There's three, but we're gonna do something else with the third one. So we have a lot of really cool ideas for, for their, for that building, if everything goes well.
Yeah, you know, we, we face a few challenges in Alamogordo, particularly when it comes to like retail and things like that, because of our population size. When you look at business, when you look at, like, especially like I said, retail business, there's a lot of companies that don't wanna come here because we're a population of thirty-one thousand and the threshold is normally like fifty thousand, I think, or sixty thousand, something like that. So that's been a little challenging for us as well. So if we can get things like that in that downtown area, and I didn't know we weren't supposed to talk about the Onion Building, so. Yeah, we'll just ignore that. I'm excited about it, I was like, I didn't know we weren't supposed to talk about it, I'm excited about it, so.
One thing that, that really hits me when I come to Alamogordo, you have a lot of chains here, like Chili's and things like that, and they've been here for a long time. Like there's, people are spending money here, I mean, Chili's will not stay here if it's not making money.
See, and I think, I think that's what people don't understand is, even like we, we have apartments that are breaking ground at some point, God willing. And, you know, lenders, even lenders are, you know, they're a little nervous about, or, or even builders about building apartments and things, and I'm telling them, you know what, those apartments are gonna be rented before you're ever finished with them. But it's getting people to take that chance on our city, people like you that are willing to come and take a chance. I think that's the biggest issue for us is, you know, I talked about, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem McDonald talked about the TV station coming. They were here last year and they were absolutely stunned at all of the things that we had to do here, and I remember them even commenting and saying, we need to come and spend a week here to cover all this. And so they, I, I think Alamogordo is one of those hidden gems that people just don't understand, there's a lot going on. And there are a lot of very motivated citizens here and never have I seen more of that than now. I mean, people are really excited about what's going on in our community and the energy and the, the, you know, even the orange barrels on Tenth Street, I, most people I talk, there's a few that get upset, but most of them are like, those barrels equal progress. And so we are making incredible progress in our city and these things take time. And so it's always exciting when we have people come and, and wanna invest in our community, 'cause we, we know what we have, but getting other people to see what we have is, is, can often be challenging. So I just appreciate that you're, you're willing to invest, so thank you for that. Does anybody else, yes, Commissioner?
Is this more for staff? In the, in the LIDA agreement, if we decide to do with this, what kind of callback provisions will we have in there as far as, in, in the event that it doesn't work?
So we have a callback, well, we started putting callbacks in all of the LIDA agreements and we'll also have either a mortgage or a surety bond that he'll have to do to make sure that we protect the investment. But at the end of the day, we try to work before we do that callback. I think we are about to, we tried everything we can with the previous LIDA, we're about to enact that callback, that's probably been a year in the making, but we'll have a callback that depending on where they're at, if they close doors, how much they have to, have to pay back to us. That'll be based on the job creations.
Okay, and then, you know, typically we put requirements in the LIDA agreement, you know, as far as financials and, and various things yearly, or how, how often will the audits and stuff be done?
Usually we'll do annually, but I've actually been trying to keep quarterly updates, just kind of where are you, where you, what are you doing, just to make sure that we don't get to the point where we did with some of the other ones, where we wait annually and there's been problems throughout the year and that we weren't aware of. So an annual audit is a must, but we'll probably at least reach out quarterly.
Reports quarterly, or some sort of financial information. And then if I recall, the, the way our ordinance was structured, typically this LIDA money was intended for brick and mortar manufacturing type jobs, not really a retail type establishment. Have they changed the state law to allow us to use this?
The state law back in twenty twenty-two was changed to allow retail for communities under fifty thousand.
Even though our ordinance was written a specific way?
Our ordinance also gives the commission the ability to do what's best for the community. That's how it was written.
I haven't, I haven't read that in a long time, but I wanna make sure we're not giving away money that we're.
It's a fantastic read, why not? Just kidding.
So, but.
I have a final question, any competition? Is there gonna be any competition within the RAD organization? Do you have like gamers come from all over the country to participate in anything?
It's so crazy because in Las Cruces, pinball's huge. Like people love pinball in Las Cruces. We try to do tournaments in El Paso, no one shows up. People come from Albuquerque to play the tournaments here at. So as far as competition, I think we will drop people here, if we have a good pinball lineup, people will come from Albuquerque. I mean, they, the pinball, the pinball people, I'm one of them too, we're kinda crazy. I mean, they'll drive four hours to play, you have the new Godzilla, they'll drive. So we get, we get quite a few people coming in to our tournaments in, in Las Cruces to play pinball. It's just big, it's really big in Las Cruces and I think it'll be the same thing in Alamogordo. Our lineups usually are minimum of eight to ten machines in one spot. We really found that that works really well.
Well, this is, I, I'm, I'm kinda bragging because my grandson, he's sixteen, he got first place at the competition, so I'm trying to get him to come to see me in Alamogordo, so I have to have something that I can.
Are you, are you talking about, are we gonna have gaming competitions? Is that what you're saying?
But any type, because they play.
We have like Mario Kart Mondays where they come in and we have, do Mario Kart Mondays. I wanna do Mortal Mondays, we do Mortal Kombat tournaments, things like that, but we do, we do offer some tournaments, yes. Pinball tournaments are the biggest thing that we do.
Got one more question too. You'd stated that you'll have a bar in there as well. Have you already secured a liquor license?
No, we have to, the liquor licenses go so quick now. My wife and I, the first one to get was, was very cumbersome to do it, you have to go through all these checks and.
So it's just gonna be the beer and wine license?
No, it's gonna be a full liquor license.
Where are you gonna obtain that in?
There's already three people that have, have some for lease and I can also talk to my broker in Albuquerque who has a couple for sale, so.
I didn't think that they could transfer them from county to county.
They can, they can transfer them.
They can?
Yes, sir.
'Cause like last I knew, we didn't have any more full liquor licenses available here in Otero County, so, or within the city limits.
But we, like, I believe the one that we have in New Mexico, we're leasing in Las Cruces, it's a gentleman from Albuquerque who's leasing it to us.
He's leasing it to you, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve local economic development funds for up to one million dollars for RAD Retrocade?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie, that was quick, I'm like gonna get whiplashed over here, all right. Can we put up the vote? Thank you.
Yeah.
And motion passes seven zero. Congratulations and welcome to Alamogordo, we're very happy to have you, thank you. Okay, before we move on to item nine, I believe our attorney has a statement.
Yes, Mayor, so I just wanted to make a quick statement before you guys voted.
Wait, let's wait one second. Apparently we're clearing out the room. Fine then, be that way, no, I'm just kidding. Sorry about that. Hey Vivian, you did great. Tell your dad I said to go buy you a cupcake.
Dad.
Dad, did you hear that, Dad?
I'm talking to him.
Tell your dad I said to go buy you a cupcake, sorry.
Believe it or not, we owe you a cupcake.
Oh, fine.
So, yes, Mayor, I wanted to make a quick statement before you guys voted about going into an executive session. So it is my professional opinion as the city attorney that you should not go into an executive session to discuss the city manager position at this time. As you all know, we self-reported to the Department of Justice about a potential violation of the Open Meetings Act about not giving appropriate notice when we conducted the city manager interviews. The DOJ sent that self-report to the Attorney General and we are currently waiting for the AG to respond to this potential violation. Until we hear back from the AG about whether we violated the Open Meetings Act or not, it is advised by the DOJ that we not make any decisions or take any actions pertaining to the city manager position. This is to prevent any further potential violations. It is my legal opinion that we should not go into an executive session or do anything with the city manager position until we hear from the AG's office. Once we hear back from the AG's office, we will know if we did violate the Open Meetings Act and how to cure it, or we will know for sure that we did not violate the Open Meetings Act. After that, we can go into an executive discussion to discuss the next steps. Now, I understand that it's frustrating, you know, that everything is kind of on a hold right now, but to avoid creating a bigger issue, my advice is to wait to have this executive session until we hear from the AG.
Do we have a timeline?
So I do know that Rachel had just received confirmation yesterday from the AG's office saying that they did obtain that self-report and that they had assigned it to one of their attorneys in that office. And, but again, everyone's pretty much saying we, we really shouldn't do anything until we can correct that, we don't even know if it's a, if it's a violation or not.
How's it not a violation? We violated the Open Meetings Act.
We haven't, have been confirmed yet, the, the AG, but, and we don't know how to cure it until they tell us, you know, yes, you did violate and here's how you guys can cure it, kinda thing.
Can we, can you just explain real quick what, what the potential violation was?
So Rachel, I think you, you had done the report, can you, I know it's something about we didn't give proper notice.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, so one of the ways to cure it is to actually bring it into open session. However, I'm still waiting to hear from the DOJ, the Department of Justice. So apparently there was, when the, there was the city manager interviews, there was a posting of a potential quorum, however, that was not the correct posting. There should have been a special meeting in order to go into that executive session and then have those interviews. The DOJ has assigned an assistant attorney from their bureau to review this and I still haven't heard back. I asked again and they said we're still in review.
Okay, thank you. And just so we're clear, it's the New Mexico Department of Justice, I roll.
Yes.
It is not the Department of Justice. We are not.
Personally, I feel we need to go back there and, and figure out what it is we're gonna do. We, we need to get a city manager hired or get the process started. We can't wait for the state. We know we violated it, we need to put it on the agenda, correct the violation and move forward. You know, we haven't had a city manager, full-fledged city manager since October, I believe it was.
Well, I don't, I, I am not personally inclined to go against legal advice, but I'm just one opinion. But I'm not personally inclined to go against legal advice. So I guess we need to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to read in the Open Meetings Act, and it does have to do with the, a reason to go into executive session, and that's limited personnel is actually in H dash two of ten fifteen. And that states, is for limited personnel matters so long as the matter's related to the discussion of hiring, promotion, demotion, dismissal, assignment, or resignation of, or the investigation or consideration of complaints or charges against any individual public employee, such matters are for public employees under the supervision of the City Commission. Permissible, the Alamogordo City Commission oversees the work of the city manager.
Okay.
And that last sentence was actually from the DOJ.
Okay. Sounds like you've manipulated staff to try to kill this deal, so we can't go back there and talk about it, so.
But I did?
Yes, I don't understand why we can't go back there.
I literally just got back, I literally just got back into town at eleven-thirty last night, I've been gone for a week. I didn't manipulate anything.
We need to go back there and talk about it because staff threw out all of our applicants without the commission's approval.
Okay, I had nothing to do with that either.
Well, that right there is an issue, that's why I wanna go back there and talk about it.
No, the issue is that you keep looking at me and blaming me and I don't appreciate you questioning my integrity. The memo said, and I quote.
When did the commission?
And I quote, subsequent to me making my public comments about interference from outside, from, from out, subsequent to me making my comments about outside interference, subsequent to that, there has been an additional allegation against a commissioner.
You're the only one that's heard.
I don't know, I haven't heard, that is my point. If you would let me finish, if you'd let me finish, I haven't heard, I haven't heard a word. Contrary to what you may think, I am not talking to people about it, I've literally been gone for a week and I do not appreciate you questioning my integrity and suggesting that I set this up. I was told, I was told at five-thirty today about a statement, that's what I was told, I'm following our legal advice, the attorney that you say that I need to listen to, I'm following her advice.
Okay, well, we threw out all of our.
Please do not question my integrity, I don't appreciate it.
We threw out all of our applicants and started this over based off of an allegation that nobody else has heard of.
I didn't do it, nobody asked me.
Nobody else has a problem with that?
Nobody asked me what I thought. I had nothing to do with absolutely, my conscience is clear. I had nothing to do with it.
We had applicants, we had, we had interviews scheduled and then based off of memo about three weeks ago, we've kicked the can down the road another three weeks.
Based off a memo that said there's been an allegation made against a commissioner. I don't know who the commissioner is, but when we find out, perhaps we can get this going.
Well, that's my question is, let's go back there and find out where the allegation is.
And who's going to tell us?
Well, is there an investigation ongoing with it?
First and foremost, I would say that that would be, not be an appropriate executive session topic, at least from what we have written on here. Because again, it's.
It's pertaining to the city manager's deal. Staff threw it out.
But it's still limited. And I will say that, yes, I have started an investigation, or I haven't started an investigation. I have asked to have an investigation started. We have hired out to C.B. Burns to do an investigation on all the allegations that I have been receiving from different people. And I am letting C.B. handle all of it. I am keeping it out of the city's hands because, you know, since it is commission, I have asked her to completely deal with it.
I would personally like to know what the allegations are, honestly.
Well, I would too, but I haven't heard anything yet.
I say, we, our staff basically took our authority away by throwing all of the interviews out.
I can't help that. I had nothing to do with it.
They needed to take us back there and tell us why we threw them out. Sorry, guys. You guys have a good evening.
Sorry, thank you.
Just saying, guys, we have got to get a city manager search going.
I will say that the throwing out the applicants, that is another thing that we may have to self-report. We are asking, I know Rachel has been in communications with the New Mexico Department of Justice to find out whether we do have to self-report that.
What are we self-reporting for? We threw it out because you didn't have direction?
About the throwing it out from, without the commission's input, I guess. So that is something we have been in communications with to see if we needed to self-report on that. We have not received guidance yet about whether, as far as I know. I don't think we received anything today about whether we need to self-report that, but that is a question that we have asked the DOJ as well. And again, I mean, this is why I'm saying that going into an executive session can just compound the issue and cause a bigger issue. We already have maybe, we already did one self-report. We might have to do a second one. We do not know yet. You know, I, it is my professional opinion that if we go into executive session, we could cause a bigger issue. And that is why I told the mayor, I want to make this statement to try to protect, protect the city and protect you guys from us having to continuously.
Okay, for the record, I did not ask you to make a statement, right?
No, I said, I told you.
You have not spoken to me.
I have a statement that I want to make. Please, before you guys vote, please, you know, allow me to talk. But no, you did not ask me to speak.
I didn't set anything up. And I don't appreciate your comments.
I would like to move for an adjournment.
No, it's not. Fine.
I'm trying to listen to it.
I would like to move for an adjournment. Can I get a second someone?
It's just adjourned.
We do have to have a motion though to go into executive session or not. That's an item on here.
Make a motion to adjourn and not go into executive session, correct?
That's my motion.
So item nine is executive session. Do we want to?
On advice of legal counsel, we don't.
No, I get that. I'm, what I'm trying to find out is, do we need to vote not to go in or do we just?
Madam Mayor, so a vote is always done in a positive and not a negative. So we're going to make the motion to adjourn into, and this is where you either vote yes or no.
Yes or no. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
Motion is to adjourn into executive session?
Yes.
That's the motion. Yes, Commissioner Ruden.
And decide whether to vote for it or against it. So can we put, who wants to make a motion?
Warren's made a motion.
Okay.
Looking for a second.
Sorry, I'm looking for a second.
I'm sorry. So is he's making the motion to adjourn into executive session?
And a second from Commissioner Ruden, yes.
So you do want to adjourn. Okay.
Commissioner Robinson?
If we vote no on this, will we have to do another motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and again, this vote is to adjourn into executive session.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You can't yet. We've got to wait for this vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ruden, you voted to adjourn into executive session.
I voted no.
You voted not to?
On here to.
Right, but you made the second to adjourn.
Sorry, I'm confused. We had the vote, which was a motion to adjourn into executive session. And we need to vote no because we don't want to go back there, right?
So no, so if you're not wanting to go back there, then you're not voting to go back there. You're just not voting.
Oh, I thought we had to vote no.
Voted no.
So we always vote as a positive. So who, who wants to make the, who wants to make the motion to go into executive session?
I understand that, but if the majority votes no, then the motion doesn't pass.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So how did it pass?
Motion to adjourn, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So we're done?
No, we're not going to executive session.
Are we done for the evening?
So now I need a motion to adjourn.
So move to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Commissioner Robinson, second.
I'll second it.
What's that? Oh, we're adjourned, sorry.